Fifth Ward applicants to fill our current position. This will, oh yeah, thanks Denise. That's such a different kind of meeting. We've got people all over the place. All right. So we will hopefully figure out a way to fill this fifth ward opening until the November election. So it's a kind of a short stint, but you certainly learned some things along the way. And we really appreciate Beth Aronson, Austin Blunk, and Nick Pelzinski for their interest in the position and providing us the information that you did. We've asked for you to come today and give a little presentation to city council. Ask for, you know, five minutes of your time to maybe tell us a little bit more about you that might not be in your provided documents. And we have decided we're just going in alphabetical order. So to make it as fair as we can. First, we're going to open the meeting with a quick roll call. Michelle, would you call the roll for those who are here?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Nauman?
Here.
Saxer?
Here.
Baden?
All right. Today is Tuesday, January 24, 2023, 5 o'clock. And we're going to roll into our presentations from our applicants. And again, we'll do that in alphabetical order. So we'll do Beth Aronson, Austin Blunk, and Nick Pelzinski. Beth, come on up.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Okay.
You can move those microphones. They'll probably pick you up pretty easily.
Oh, I do have a loud voice. Can everybody hear okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Beth Aronson, and I have been in business in the Quad Cities since 1999. Started The Coffee Hound. We have expanded to East Moline, Rock Island, Davenport, and Bettendorf. We opened The Cheesy Cow at TBK in 2017. And it's been quite an adventure out at TBK, growing the businesses out there. It's, it's an amazing facility. It's very blessed to be part of it. I believe we were the first ones in next to Hertz Donut. So it's been very interesting to see how fast it's been growing. And I know we're in for phase two soon. I was asked to be on a panel recently during COVID with Joni Ernst, Senator Joni Ernst, and to talk about basically what was going on during COVID and small businesses and kind of reflect and give her some ideas on how we were struggling and, but yet how the city supported us so well. It was great with Governor Kim Reynolds for helping us stay open and the city for allowing us to stay open. So it really didn't hurt our business in any sense. Very grateful to be part of this community. I, part of my passion has always been teenagers. So that's kind of my platform. They've always worked for us. We've always kind of been their go-to when they don't want to speak to their parents. I have taken in troubled teens, I think about four that have lived with us, and was very blessed to be a part, partner, I shall say. Not that the Bettendorf Police wanted me as a partner, but when Phil Reddington was the chief, I actually had his personal cell number. I was able to text him anytime we had a problem, when I had a question, when there was a runaway, anything that dealt with the teens. He answered so many questions for me. JP was a big part, he's actually in here today, of helping me kind of lift these teens up. And really, the, the thing about, that I see with the city is that these teenagers are going to be our next voters. I mean, we have a lot of elder population. I mean, obviously, we have also the 50-year-olds, which are still young. But these teens will be the ones that'll be voting. They'll be the ones that'll raise families here. I'm a PV graduate, 1988. Then I went off to U and I. But I think supporting them in their troubles, it's very scary right now with mental health. I see them at work talk about their mental health, their depression, and a lot of the other things that are going on at the schools, including unfortunately, addiction is quite big now. I think this year, it seems to have gotten a lot better. I was in a lot of contact with the principal, Darren, at PV High School when there was a lot going on at my home. And he has really got his finger on it, on, on all the addiction and the drugs. But I feel that that generation is going to be a big asset up and coming if we really support them. I think a good thing is the TBK, having them have a place to go to, you know, run off steam and such. But I think also having somewhere where they can, I mean, back in the day, I remember we had that place, if you all recall, because we're about similar in age. I think it was called like Beethoven's, where you could go and you could get mocktails and you could see your friends and you could pretend like you're out doing things. These teens always say to me, well, there's nothing to do here, so we'll just get in trouble or we'll leave the house when our parents are sleeping or whatever. But supporting them on, on having activities and things for them to do would be a great asset to this community, especially considering we do have a lot of land out there, places where we could perhaps think about building or having TBK have teen nights or anything like that. I mean, I think that's an important thing to have. But other than that, that's kind of what my passion is anyway.
Good to know.
And obviously, being a business owner, so.
Sure, sure.
Any questions or did I go over enough?
Yeah, we just wanted to have an opportunity to get to know you a little bit. I know five minutes isn't that long, but I've had the opportunity to know all three of you, and I think most of us have from previous experience in the city. Any, any questions? Did that raise any questions or thoughts for anybody? No? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And thanks very much for what you do in the community as well as your interest here.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Austin.
I'd like to thank everyone for their time tonight and consideration for the fifth ward alderman position. My name is Austin Blunk. My wife and I have a two-year-old son and are expecting a daughter this coming April. I've been, I have been a proud resident of Bettendorf my entire life. I come from a multi-generational Bettendorf family that traces back to 1881, when my family purchased 190-acre farm for $42 an acre that's located in the northeast part of Bettendorf.
You're selling that now for about the same? Is that what you're going to say? I know, guy, I'm just asking.
The family farm has been such a prideful aspect of my life that I purchased and currently own a portion of this land now. I'm very grateful to say that I'm one of the last remaining members of my family to still own a portion of this land in Bettendorf. I attended Pleasant Valley High School, graduated in 2011. After graduation, I attended Scott Community College, then transferred to Iowa State University, majoring in landscape design. As my college career progressed, I also began my business called Valley Outdoor in 2012. This business allowed me to bring in extra money to pay for college tuition expenses along the way. I would attend school during the week and return home on the weekends to provide quality lawn care and landscaping services for the residents around the Quad Cities. Over the years, the business had tremendous growth and demand in the community, and I had to make a very difficult decision to choose between school and taking the risk of being an entrepreneur. I chose to return home and grow my business in our community. Owning a business is not easy by any means. You have daily struggles, successes. As many of you may know, the hardships I faced early in my career certainly helped me learn from my mistakes and guide me toward the future. The journey as a business owner and a Bettendorf resident has given me extensive experience with our residents in our community, dealing with customer service, how to navigate adversities, and to self-reflect. I'm very thankful for this, thankful to this community that have helped shape me to the person I am today. I'm a fourth-generation volunteer firefighter with the city of Bettendorf. I was for nine years. During this time, I attended weekly trainings, fire, and EMS calls, and also multiple community events throughout the year. Being a volunteer firefighter, I learned about the structure of command, the policies and procedures, and why they are in place. Throughout those nine years, that experience that I learned along the way gave me even more pride and motivation to serve my community. Throughout my whole life, I have always helped out my father with our current farm operations at our family farm. Farming has always been very time-sensitive because you're reliant on Mother Nature. So when you have the opportunity to complete the task at hand, you have to put in the longer hours to do so. The work ethic that I've gained from farming, I feel like, is something that definitely sets me apart from others. I'm forever grateful to have those experiences in my life and hope to pass it down to future With all my previous endeavors, it has given me a great deal of experience in teamwork, professionalism, responsibility, and pride I feel like I can use towards being a fifth ward alderman. With my knowledge and previous experiences, I'm able to, I'm able to process and think about decisions for our community from several different perspectives for the benefit of the city. I have a great deal of insight in our community. I feel I understand how city, how our city services work, the current processes that are in place. And I am a forward thinker who is not afraid to ask the difficult questions and complete the difficult tasks. I am also a credible leader who is eager to give back to this community for future growth and development. I'm very excited about the future of the city and I'm ready to get to work. I want to thank everybody for your time and consideration for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Appreciate you and your interest in all you do in the community. Nick?
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council, and esteemed guests, which I pretty much know all of them. My name is Nick Pelzinski, and I was born and raised in Bettendorf, and over a year ago, returned with my wife and three kids to the city where I grew up. During my time outside of Bettendorf, I had the opportunity to grow a unique set of skills, both personally and professionally. During the past four years, I have built sales organizations for companies that are on the leading edge of technology, specifically focused on computer vision and machine learning and artificial intelligence. My family and I have had the opportunity to live in many different communities, which has afforded me an opportunity to see other, how other communities operate. This unique, these unique experiences allow me to bring a new perspective to the city of Bettendorf while leveraging the skills I have developed in my personal and professional career. Over the past few months, I have spent time researching what is required of a city council member. I have attended the meetings, spoken with current and past city council members and other administration members, and discussed this opportunity with many business, influential business leaders in the community. I am excited about the opportunity to give back in a meaningful way to the community that I grew up in and that I so dearly love. Throughout my research, I've gained a better understanding of the requirements of a city council member. I also recognize that this appointment is bigger than any one candidate. This is an opportunity to represent the city of Bettendorf and the residents of the fifth ward. I have gained key insights on the important topics in the fifth ward, such as water control, economic development, and staffing for emergency services to grow and meet the growing, to meet the demands of our city and specifically the fifth ward. By joining the council now, it will afford me the opportunity to be involved in the budget process, planning process in February and represent the fifth ward for the goal-setting process in this fall. Based on what we've seen here tonight, I think us as the candidates have the easier decision or the easier job. I appreciate your consideration and look forward to what the future holds for the city of Bettendorf. Thank you.
I didn't ask if anybody had questions for Austin. Did anybody have questions for Austin? No, any questions for Nick? Okay. That makes me feel a little better since I screwed up. We'll drag you right back, Austin.
I guess I would ask if we're negotiable on this Bears thing at all down there I see in the crowd, but necessarily a question for Nick.
I'm just finishing a note. Nick, thank you for all that you've done in the community, and thank you for your interest in the position. Obviously, all three of you as two business owners and somebody with some experience in business, raising your families here and doing the work that you've done here make you all incredible help for this city. So please continue doing all that you're doing. Please know that if you're interested, we've got other volunteer roles for you. We'd love to continue to work with you. And I'm lucky enough to work with two out of the three of you. Got to know Nick for attending some meetings. We just can't thank you enough for stepping forward to seek to fill this vacancy. We're very lucky, because this could have gone a really different direction, and either nobody was interested or the type of people that you don't want serving you would be interested. And I think we can say with confidence from every position here and those that I know in the community, you'd be a joy to work with, all three of you, and you would be not only responsive, but responsible for those in the fifth ward who would be proud to have you serve them. So I'm just tickled pink that we got such great representation and people who are interested in the position. So thank you very much for that. That, that means a ton. So at this point on the agenda, we can do a number of things. We can have a discussion about the appointment if we have enough information. We have the 31st set aside if we want to continue that discussion at that point in time. You guys can talk about it. I suppose if there are any questions, the folks who are here could answer them, although you didn't have any, which is okay. If, if things pop up, as you know, I'll try to lead the discussion and, and don't have a vote, so you guys get to help select the person who will serve with you. Does anybody want to start discussion?
Your Honor, I'd throw my hat in the ring for that.
Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would echo what you said about the city being in good hands, where we have, I mean, we've sat here time and time again and encouraged our constituents to come to meetings, to get involved, because it's so important that we have that two-way dialogue, because we're very interested in hearing. And then obviously, when we have the opportunity to replace one of our own colleagues, that we're always hopeful that people will come with an open heart, with an open mind, and a true passion for the city. And I think we've clearly seen that today, and that's awesome. And so I guess if we can come to some sort of a conclusion or resolution, I would, I would say to the other two candidates that I don't think that we're voting, I don't, at least that's my own personal opinion, I don't think we'd be voting against any one of you, but encourage that there's, that this is, as it was for many of us, a longer-term play. For myself, I had no knowledge. I remember when I even started kicking around local services, like, I don't even know if I would vote for me. I don't know if I'd be any good. I just know I have the right heart for this. And that's why I'm so encouraged to see this now. And you think, well, would you do it again in four years? Goes by like that. And then pretty soon, you're eight and 12, and now, you know, for me, and Greg as well, fourth, four-year term. And it's because in large measure, the staff, the environment, the folks that live in our town. And so I'm super pleased at that. I also think this is a better process, at least for me, than what we had a few years ago with Gary Moore. And, you know, again, I think that ended up very, very well, but this just feels better. And so I guess, having had the documents and the questionnaires, which we're grateful for you filling out, and then to the point Nick made, we've had an opportunity, I think many of us, to talk with you on the phone. I think Bennett, the meetings for quite some time. That, that's important. I think the other two candidates are good, but I guess I would, I don't know how we're going to do this, but I guess I would maybe throw that out as where I'm leaning is with Nick and encourage the others to then, you know, I don't know what you'll say, folks, but that's kind of where I'm at with it. And I'd make that motion tonight if we get that point where we're all.
Lot of effort to show interest.
Absolutely. Yeah, so, I mean, again, what Beth said, teenagers and troubled kids and being an advocate for, I mean, you, you just can't thank a person like that enough. And then obviously, Austin being a volunteer firefighter, there's no words to put appreciation towards that. So again, I think we have great stock to pick from here. So I would look for that, you know, again, we have to start somewhere, so I'll just throw that out as, I guess I've sort of settled on Nick for not only the interest he's shown, but his competence and the question. I guess we had some great conversations by phone. Took a while, but we got it done, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to see how this goes.
Are we comfortable just walking around, starting here and ending with Lisa? Or do you want to, any, go that way so everybody has a chance to say their piece? Go to Councilmember Saxer then?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I would have to second what Councilman Nauman's got to say here. We've got three good candidates, as Austin pointed out, or no, as Nick pointed out, that we've got the difficult decision. And I guess that we have to do it a little bit better than just flipping a coin. But I would hope that all three candidates continue to be involved with the city.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Baden, did you have to?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd second what Alderman Nauman had to say. One of the things that I looked at when I was looking at all three of you and personally know one of you and have done business with another and then have talked with Nick over the telephone in regards to this position and what was required and things like this. But what impressed me was that he came to our meetings and got a closer look at what he was getting into possibly, and what the council, how we operate and things like this, which I think are important. So I'm leaning, that's my leaning is to, towards Nick in this particular situation. But as Jerry just said, I would hope that the other two candidates would stay involved.
Well, I'll find a place for him.
Would stay involved. And it's, I wish we had three positions available, because I think we probably have three very good candidates right here. But unfortunately, we only have one, so.
Councilmember Adamson, would you like to weigh in on your thoughts for me, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Man, this is, this is tough. I've had contact with all three candidates at some form or other over the years, and it's tough. But I think, as Frank said, Nick was at the meetings. I got a phone call from him, got a chance to talk to him at length. I don't think we'd go wrong with any of the three, but I would go along with Nick as the, my choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, your thoughts?
I think also when I looked at this, I thought back to when I ran. I ran against three others, and I was the only one that hit every meeting once I put my papers in. And I had an extensive, I think, hour-long discussion with Nick and some texts in the beforehand. And I think everybody's excellent, so it was difficult. Beth doesn't remember, but I knew her from, we had horses at the same place and a long time ago. And Austin is a friend of mine since, so it was difficult. And, you know, both of you have excellent backgrounds. Austin, you know, we've talked in the past, Austin's had interests in the city as far as the development that's gone out in fifth ward and the stormwater, so we've met on that. He is, he's passionate and he's shown leadership. And I would encourage, you know, considering running, keeping that interest and getting involved, because we do need youth. We're all older here. But, so, so I think at this point, I would go with Nick.
Well, do we need any more time for consideration? Or, I mean, we do have a resolution that is blank that we set out for today's meeting, so we could add a name to that resolution, if that's what council would like to do. You also could wait to do that at the 31st meeting, should you decide to do that. I don't know how much time you have had to confer with one another and your comfortability with the decision. It sounds like you're all kind of leaning in one direction.
Well, Your Honor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Nauman.
I think it's meaningful too that Senator Webster, I don't know if we're calling it an endorsement, but he did put in a recommendation for Nick as well. I think that's, obviously, we're respectful of people in the fifth ward and this quasi, I guess judicial process that we're going through today. It's important to look at Webster's perspective on this deal too. But I would make a motion to put Nick in that fifth ward vacancy. And that'd be something I hope we're comfortable with. I'd make that motion.
Second.
Is there discussion further than when we went around the horn? Yes, Councilmember Adamson?
You know, I, I know we can, we've got a, an appointment or a meeting scheduled for next, next week, but I, I personally, I don't know what else I could, I could do. I've read the questionnaires several times and really, this is an important decision. And I don't know what else I could, I could do more than what I've, what I've done. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty solid with, with, with my, with my, my opinion.
It almost sounded like a second.
And so it's, it's a second, but I, I don't, I don't see, I don't think we need to, I personally don't think we need to wait another week, and that would give, you know, we've got the budget, budget coming up and other things coming up. Just get, get going with it.
All right, so I'm taking this as a motion to add to the resolution and a second. We're going to continue discussion, but just to be clear, this will add Nick Pelzinski to that resolution. And Chris, if you want to kind of explain the double step that we're doing, because we don't do this often, and it's not real settled. Well, the law is real settled, but it isn't, doesn't give great guidance.
That's, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. You're right that the Iowa code doesn't prescribe any particular manner for the council to, to come to this decision of appointing a new council member to, for a vacancy. But our city code does indicate that for the decision, it has to be done by resolution. And there are some nuances in terms of the number needed for a resolution as opposed to a motion. But because the resolution that was in the packet was blank, we need a motion to add that name to the resolution. The ultimate decision would be done by resolution, which would need four yes votes in order to pass the resolution. So for clarity, this, as I understood the motion and as you clarified, was that this motion would be to add Nick Pelzinski to the resolution. We would then take a roll on that motion and then move to the resolution.
Then you have a resolution that could be moved as written, which you've seen, but for the vacancy, you know, was blank. And now we're going to put Nick's name there based upon this motion, if indeed it passes. So we are at the point of more discussion. I just wanted to make sure that was, we're aware it's a two-step process. Any further discussion on adding Mr. Pelzinski? Yes, Councilmember Saxer.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the purpose of the people at home that are watching that may have not watched previous meetings, could we have a brief review as to why we're not doing a public vote?
Well, it's a decision of city council. City council made the choice to, rather than a special election, seek applicants for the open position. We received three tremendous applicants and therefore felt pretty good about bringing those forward to you in the form that they were brought forward. There is still opportunity. This, one of your options would be to have a special election. You haven't made the final decision on this candidate, but that's where we are for now. We had the three candidates or applicants provide you the information that they have.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And, and Your Honor, just to clarify, to further clarify, I think Jerry's question, there were two decision points relative to appeal, if the electorate chose to appeal. And one of them was 14 days after the vacancy, I believe, and the other one is 14 days from the date of an appointment. So there's still, if the electorate were to choose, didn't like this decision, there's still a 14-day period under which a petition could be submitted to the council to cause a special election. So there's still a, an appeal time. Chris wants to.
Correct. The Iowa code is clear that there are two options for a council to act if there's a vacancy, by appointment, which is what's typically done, or by special election. And even if the council does choose to move with the appointment process, which is what you've done, because we filed the notice of intent to appoint, the, the elected, or the electors, the eligible electors of the fifth ward could still, within 14 days of the appointment date, file a petition with 15% of the number of voters from the last fifth ward election. They could file that petition, and we would still then require a special election. So we would then have to work with the auditor, find a date, do all of that. So that's the process. It's a very technical process, but this is, you know, the way that the council chose. And, and then the 14-day period would begin to run.
Thank you, sir, both of you. Thank you, sir, both of you. Any further discussion on the pending motion to add the name Nick Palzinski to the resolution that would then have to be passed either today or a later date before the 31st? On the 31st would be your meeting. Seeing no further discussion, let's call the roll on adding Nick to the resolution.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right. Unanously, we have added Nick Palzinski to the resolution for appointment as the Fifth Ward City Councilperson to fill that vacancy. That resolution will have to be moved before this honorable body.
I'd make that motion, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion on the resolution. Probably done it in your last discussions, but I want to give you the opportunity. Okay. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Okay. We have unanimously voted to add Nick Palzinski in that role as a Fifth Ward Councilperson. Again, Austin and Beth, thank you very much. I've got great opportunities for you, so don't go anywhere. I need your help. You certainly also have the opportunity to file for the special election, which would mean everybody would run for offices if it was a regular election, just only those candidates who want to be the Fifth Ward Alderperson or Councilperson. Those are the matters set before us by agenda this evening, so there's nothing else we can take up. I suppose I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much for being here. Thanks again, Beth, Austin, and Nick. We do have some time, and somebody, Chris maybe will talk to Austin, or excuse me, Nick, about what to expect, if anything, over the